We have two people here that signed up for public comment. Martin Sanders.
Yep.
There you are. If you'd like to come, and are you with the next person? Do you want to come together, or there was a, can't read the first word. B A E K?
Suback.
Suback, okay. If you two would like to come over to this table here and state your name for the record, and we've got your addresses here if you'd like to just say where you're from and give us your thoughts.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Martin Sanders. I'm from Lake Oswego, Oregon. The reason why I come here this morning before you is I would like to ask for a temporary licensing or something of that effect to be able to apply for the licensing of the marijuana recreational until the next election. And part of the reasons why I asked for this is we, my wife and I decided to do this business after me being in construction of 22 years. I was injured. I snapped both bicep tendons and is somebody that was very negative to the marijuana industry. I learned that marijuana creams were the only thing that took my pain away. And so with that, we decided to move forward. We opened a dispensary in Hood River and then we have a grow site in Marion County that supplies our dispensary. We have 10 employees and we have spent, we've figured to date, over $250,000 in Marion County, and we'd like to continue doing our business there and keep our employees going. And, you know, so again, I just asked for temporary licensing until the next election so we could proceed with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, name is Suback. Reside in Hillsboro, Oregon. I also have a medical marijuana grow operation in Marion County, actually in Woodburn, Oregon. And, you know, just like Martin, we're just small business owners trying to, you know, run a business, just like every other small business owner out there. We want the opportunity to take care of our families and our employees and have the same rights as any other small business owner out there to, you know, just the same rights. I mean, basically. And that's all we're looking for. We're looking for an opportunity to open up dialogue, to do what we need to do, to apply for a conditional use permit until next November. Because, I mean, this is affecting our families. It's affecting our livelihoods. And we put everything into this business like any other small business owner. And unfortunately, because of this moratorium, it's hindering us from doing what we need to do. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a real quick question of both of you? So are you, are your grow sites right now operating under the medical marijuana parameters?
That's correct.
And does something change for you on March the first?
Yes.
In terms of what you can currently do?
Yes.
Can you explain just real briefly what that is? Because I'm not, I'm not understanding that.
Currently, right now, we care for 30 patients that we take care of. And so we have a pretty good size facility and our overhead is quite large. And in March, we will be cut down to 48 total plants, which will not even cover our rent, much less cover our patients. So we'll have to get rid of over half, over half of our patients. And basically, we'll have to get rid of all of our employees and everything else, just because we won't be able to foot the bill. So basically, what we'd like to do is be able to continue doing under rec so we could also provide for our dispensary in Hood River, because it's, we'll be applying for, for the recreational use. And for us to be able to supply our own dispensary as a grower, we have to be able to grow under the recreational laws as well. So we could, you know, provide our own product to them. So not only does it, you know, hinder our employees at the farm, but it will also hinder the employees at the Hood River dispensary as well.
So just so I can get a sense of scope, so 48 plants is what you'd be limited to? What, about how many plants do you have now? Just so I can get a sense of that.
We have about 150.
Okay.
So we have 144.
Okay. It's 30 patients times whatever you're allowed then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And similar story for you?
Same situation. I mean, our operation is a little smaller, but, I mean, the moratorium affects us in just different ways. I mean, we have different overheads. Obviously, Martin's operation is a little bit bigger, but, you know, unless we're able to apply for the recreational license, and given, there's no guarantee that we'll be able to get the recreational license, but, you know, like I said, as a small business owner, we want to have the opportunity to do so. And we all took a large gamble, like any, any business that you're going to open up, you know, whether it's a grocery store or marijuana facility. I mean, there's, there's expenses that we incur and take chances as small business owners to make it succeed. And unfortunately, because of this moratorium, I mean, our hands are tied.
So just to get back to my question though, so about how many plants do you have now?
We have 96.
Okay. And then March 1st, what does that drop it down to?
Forty-eight.
Okay. So everybody can just have 48 on March the 1st? Is that the way the law works?
That's correct.
Unless you were grandfathered in. There are other individuals that were grandfathered in if they were, they were growing. So the rules is 96 plants per location. If you have not been growing 96 plants by the end of December 31st of 2014, you will not have those grandfather rights. Then you will be limited to 48 plants.
Okay.
So we're being limited down to 48 plants. That's more so the reason why we need the opportunity to apply for the recreational license.
Okay.
And we will, with those 48 plants, will only be able to sell to recreational dispensaries. They won't be able to do the intake as, sorry, they'll, we can only do the intake to medical. We can't sell to recreation, recreational at all. So, and with that, I mean, over half of our crop is CBD crop, which is for medical use anyway, but in order to stay, you know, in the game, you know, stay in business with our recreational dispensary in Hood River, we have to provide both.
Okay. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate the information.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak under public comment? Didn't sign up?
Hi, ma'am.
Sure. If you would state your name and your address, please, since you didn't sign up already. Or we'll get you to, at least tell us your community and then we'll get you to, if you could come and talk to Kristi, you could sign this sheet.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Good morning. My name is Kathleen Sanders. I'm Marty's wife, and I'm also a licensed pharmacist in Oregon of 20 years. And just, I just wanted to actually add into their conversation, one of the things that's very important in this industry that the commission board may not know is that to have fruitful crops, you need certain growing conditions, the lighting, it varies from species to species. And as a pharmacist, taking on, you know, very, very needy patients, some of them with ALS, some of them with multiple sclerosis, others with PTSD, and each of those disease states requires a different type of combination of the THC/CBD component in the plant. And so one of the things that also is, you know, dropping down to 48 plants, it's, you know, bad luck for us. We could, we could do it. But the other impact it would have is that we would have to not be able to grow the variety of, of plants that these particular patients would need. And we would probably, as a business, have to pick one or two strains and eliminate the different, you know, pick one disease state, one or two strains, and then eliminate the rest. And that's just based on general agriculture, things of that nature. So just wanted to add that in. It is not just a money sense, but it's fruitful crop, having, having that into the whole equation for us. Thank you for your time.
Is that everyone? All right. We'll move on to our presentation. So Ed, you are on now. We have certificates of appreciation to present to the Marion County Fire Districts, and Ed Flick is here to introduce the topic.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt, just a couple of comments. Marion County in Oregon had quite a fire season this summer, as we're all aware. But what people may not be aware, what it means when fire departments volunteer and send out their equipment and manpower to deal with these various, often, I think they're all classified as conflagrations, bigger events. And the, as you know, we had our own dry and dangerous summer here, so it's, it's, it's quite a task to keep things going, keep things covered when you're short of both manpower and equipment. And especially, Jan Fritz in our office recognized the sacrifice and the efforts made by our, our various departments here in the county and thought it would be good for us to acknowledge and recognize them, and that's what this is about. So if I could then turn it over to Ed, and he'll go down specifics, and we'd like to end with a nice picture and some certificates.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Flick, County Emergency Manager. As Commissioner Brentano said, fire agencies were busy all summer. In addition to providing fire suppression and emergency medical services here in Marion County, 12 agencies mobilized to provide support to the various fires that dominated our news this summer. Under authority of the Emergency Conflagration Act and as described in the Office of the State Fire Marshal Office Mobilization Plan, the State Fire Marshal mobilized teams, structural fire agencies, to protect homes and businesses, working with the wildland fire agencies like the Oregon Department of Forestry and the U.S. Forest Service. Having watched as the chiefs got ready for this all through last winter, I knew it was a major effort. Marion County Fire Defense Board Chief Jack Carragher worked with the other chiefs in the lead-up to the fire season to organize the county plan and then coordinated mobilizations throughout the summer. Chief Carragher reportedly managed the last deployment while on official travel in England, which was a point the Office of the State Fire Marshal really appreciated. Departments involved from Marion County included Almsville, Aurora, Drake's Crossing, Hubbard, Marion County, Mount Angel, Salem Fire Department, Silverton, Staton, Sublimity, Turner, and Woodburn, and worked the following fires. Stouts near Canyonville, Oregon, County Line 2 on the Warm Springs Reservation, the Cornet-Windy Ridge Fire near Durkey, Canyon Creek, which we all remember near John Day, the Grizzly Bear Fire near the Oregon-Washington border, south of Dayton, Washington, and the Dry Gulch Fire. All in all, a busy year and a heckuva contribution to public safety, not only in our county, but in our state.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt one more time. I like to put my friends on the spot, and Jack Carragher is a friend of mine. Could you come up, Jack, and talk about just what it was like and any anecdote incidents that come to mind to give a picture of what the summer gave us, gave you?
Well, good morning, and thank you for having us here. It was an interesting summer, and it did present challenges, especially when you consider you have multiple conflagrations going on at one time. And one of the things that I find to be very proud of is this group of gentlemen that I get, I get the pleasure of working with. They're consummate professionals. They know what needs to be done. They'll always find a way to get things done. And when you're down to the bottom of your resource barrel, it gets, you have to get a little bit creative. To put it in perspective, normally, there's lots of summers we go without a conflagration in the state. Most summers will get one or two. This year, we had six, and we had multiple, we had three of them going at one time at one point. And that is incredible demand on resources. And I am, I'm very proud to say that Marion County is one of the top resource suppliers for the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office for conflagrations for all over the state. We honestly are known to be the go-to county for conflagrations, and that's because of these gentlemen right here. It's just, Ed mentioned it a little bit, when he saw us start to get ready for this. It's an incredible feeling to be part of an organization and a group of people who come together and make things happen when they need to. And when you can, a lot of times you don't see that, it's indirect, but when you go out on a fire and you're standing and watching troops between the fire and somebody's house and watching them take that fire on, you know you're making a difference. You know that you're affecting people's lives and, and their livelihoods. And this year was, was a kind of a maybe, I don't know anywhere the way it's going. But normally, I would have said five years ago, this would be a once-in-a-lifetime kind of deal. But I actually said that five years ago, when we had three conflagrations, and one of them was on Warm Springs, and we saw some just amazing fire behavior and things that I had never seen before in my 30-some-year career. And this year kind of beat that. So I hope it's not the new norm. I don't think that's a good thing, but if it is, I feel good that we have a group of people that, that can be counted on and can provide service.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
And the whole London thing, I was there on business. Nobody, nobody knew I was there. And I'm going on talking back and forth to the State Fire Marshal's Office, back and forth from the phone, and finally, one of the people in the ALC said something, and I go, "Well, I can't really do that. I'm in London." And there was just, like, dead silence on the phone. So it was pretty funny, but it just, it's kind of cool. Our technology allows us to be halfway around the world, but we can still be real-time back in our home place. Sometimes we don't, I don't think we recognize that until something like that.
So are we ready? Go down below. Does it work? It does? Great. So how do we want to do this? Do we want to have them all come forward? Would that be good? And introduce themselves? Or do we want to pass the mic here? Well, they don't, we don't have names on here, so we just have district. So, all right.
They come up, and if you'd stay up till we get a picture.
All right. So I'll tell you what, you can do the first one, since you know how you want to do this. You can do Almsville.
All right, Aurora. I don't really know if I have anything to say other than thank you, so I will just do this and give you this, unless you want an opportunity.
Rod Yoder, Chief of Aurora Fire District. Thank you for the appreciation that you give us.
Almsville Rural Fire District.
Fire Chief Terrell Isaac of Almsville Fire. Thank you for the opportunity. We don't get to come and meet you folks very often, so it's a pleasure.
I think that the sticky notes actually have where the Almsville Fire District was involved. Is that right? So you want to read that?
The Stouts Fire and the County Line 2, Grizzly Bear and Dry Gulch.
And then you had the sticky note for?
Yeah, County Line 2, Dry Gulch, and actually, we were Grizzly Bear 2.
Third one is Drake's Crossing Rural Fire Protection District. And this one says, I kept on my glasses, Cornet-Windy Ridge and Canyon Creek. Does it sound right?
Good morning, Fred Patterson, Fire Chief at Drake's Crossing. And, excuse me, I went out with the Fire Marshal's team on the red team.
Okay.
Hubbard Fire District, and they were Canyon Creek. Be sure they get them. I think they have a new chief in Hubbard, too. Is that right?
Oh, good, I get to do this one. I actually spent a night in this, in one of their fire stations, Marion County Fire District Number 1. That was fun, too. And they were on the County Line 2, the Cornet-Windy Ridge and Canyon Creek. Yeah?
Fire Chief Terry O'Reilly, Marion County Fire District, and it's a privilege to work alongside with the crew as a Marion County Fire. And the, the Fire Defense Board is, as Chief Carragher said, it's a stand-up crew, and they do what needs to be done.
Mount Angel Fire District. Mount Angel here? Whoops. Well.
Yes, this is Salem.
All right. Well, then I get to do Salem. Salem Fire Department. So giving him Sublimity. And this is the Stouts and the Cornet-Windy Ridge. Is that right?
Fire Chief Mike Nivalek, I would like to echo the other comments. It's a privilege to be able to help out other communities across our state when the need arises. And fortunately, this year, we didn't have too many here in this area, so that's a good thing. But we know that because we help out, they will be willing to come help us in our time of need. And I'd also like to thank the Commissioners for the recognition. We appreciate it.
So then, let's see, you want to go next?
Sure. I have Silverton Fire District. And they were on the Stouts, the County Line 2, Cornet-Windy Ridge, Canyon Creek, Grizzly Bear, and Dry Gulch.
Bill Miles, Fire Chief, Sorton Fire District. And on behalf of our staff and volunteers, I thank you for the honor, and we appreciate the opportunity to help.
Thanks, Chief.
I get to do two of them that are close to me, just because I asked for it. And the first is Staton Fire Department. And Staton was at Along List 2, Stouts, County Line 2, Cornet-Windy Ridge, Grizzly Bear, Dry Gulch. And Jack, again.
I think I've said enough, but just want to say thank you. I appreciate the fact that you guys came up with this on your own, the recognition of what the troops have done and what, what we've added to the state as a whole for Marion County. Thank you.
Sublimity next?
And this one is the one that's close. I live in Sublimity, and even the chief may not know. I am a, I'm still a member. Did you know that? Yeah, I.
He knows that.
So I guess I haven't reported for a drill in 19 years, but there were a lot of them before that. So anyway, Sublimity was busy, too, Stouts and County Line 2, and thank you.
Yeah, and we also made the Grizzly Bear, I believe, with, with Chief Carragher. Alan Hume, Fire Chief with Sublimity Fire District, and I just want to say thank you to all these gentlemen. They've been very good mentors for me, and I'm, and really appreciative to be part of Marion County and all the things that go on here.
And Woodburn Fire District.
Paul Iverson, Woodburn Fire District. I want to thank the Commissioners for this, and also I helped Jack a little bit with some of the mobilizations, and I appreciate how quick everybody got troops ready to go. As you know, we get one hour's notice when we get a mobilization, and we have to be on the road, so their guys have to be all ready to do this, and it's greatly appreciated when we call and you guys say yes or no that you can make it. So, thank you.
And Woodburn was in Stouts, Grizzly Bear, Dry Gulch. That be right? Those three? And probably a bunch of others. Right.
And I'd just like to point out, as of January 1st, Paul Iverson is the county chief for Marion County.
The next year, he's in charge of all of this.
We do all this.
And we had Turner Fire District. Is anyone here from Turner? Nope. So we got everybody? Yes? We got Turner, Mount Angel, and Hubbard, so we had three that were not here. So now, Jolene, you need to figure out how to get all of these folks in a picture.
We can go back up here.
You want us to stand up above? All right, let's do, we'll do that.
They're still that tall, aren't they?
All right, take yours, Jolene.
Thank you very much. All right, well, that was wonderful. We will move now to our consent items, and Commissioner Cameron? Is that on yours?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move, move the consent calendar. First underneath the consent calendar, the Health Department approved Amendment Number 1 to the Contract for Services for the Healthcare Resource Group, LLC, for medical coding consulting services to extend through June 30th, 2016, and add an additional $12,000. Under Public Works, approved an order extending Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement through December 31st, 2016. Under Public Works, schedule adoption of an administrative ordinance for legislative amendment LA 15-002 Urban Zone Code for December 9th, 2015. And also, under Public Works, receive hearings officers' recommendation for zone change comprehensive plan amendment ZCCP case number 15-001 Coastal Forest Products, LLC.
Second motion, I probably should let it slide, but a little comment just on the Comcast Cable franchise. This agreement, we've been extending it, and I don't know the years, that's why I hesitated. It's at least five, it could be seven. I did make a case in passing on information from you, Commissioner Carlson, about the, trying to get CCTV moved up to the HD channel and output that they want to be and have been working to be, and I hope that comes together as we continue working on this franchise agreement. When we rely on CCTV so much, and they're so good to us, cover whatever we want, but we rely on them on, on presenting the activities we have to, to the people of Marion County, and if it's not being watched, or it's difficult to watch, it's troubling. So we're working on that. Just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
And John will tell us that they're moving right along, but we'll just know.
Like a snail. Yeah. All right, so you had a motion. Was yours a second? Did I hear you second the motion?
I meant to, but John wants to say something. Out of defendants.
Well, we are getting close to an agreement, and there are HD channels in the agreement, so we'll see if we can wrap up. There's, there's a lot to this agreement, and there are a lot of issues that we've been going through, but I think we're getting fairly close.
All right, so with the motion and a second to approve these four items that were read, before any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 They are approved. We have just one action item today under Health, and that is to consider approval of an order increasing the Vital Records Fee Schedule effective January 1, 2016. And we have Rod Calkins here and Rick Sherman. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rod Calkins, Marion County Health Administrator. I'm Rod Calkins, Marion County Health Administrator.
Rick Sherman from Vital Statistics and Environmental Health.
As you said, we're here today to ask your approval for an order that raises fees for the Marion County Health Department services in the area of vital records. What has happened is the Oregon Health Authority Public Health Division has established a new fee schedule effective January 1, 2016 that raises fees in some area for vital statistics, vital records. And we, as a county, are required to follow that fee schedule change by rule, and you have the rule cited in your packet there. So this is the, I want to point out that this is the first fee increase for vital records services since December of 2003, so it's been a while coming. And maybe Rick can say a little bit about what vital records fees cover and kind of what the extent of the fee increase would be in certain areas.
In Marion County, or statewide, actually, birth and death certificates will go from $20 to $25. Replace, or second copies will go from $15 to $20. So it's a $5 increase. The fee will cover mostly this, not only our part of the program, but also the state's program, which is much more wide than ours. We only keep the records for the first six months, birth and death, and provide them if the public wants or needs them. And then after that, it becomes a state function, and they do a lot, have to do a lot of being able to find records that are very old and provide the same type of service.
Rick, could I ask you to move the microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
I'm sorry. So what's coming down is that the state takes, will end up taking, the vast majority of these increases. We can keep our program going with this, and it's, it's just pretty much across the board now.
So I think Oregon's system, as Rick described, most of the archival work is done at the state, but we have a distributed system so that when somebody needs a birth or death certificate, they can go into their county office and get it locally, so to speak. So it's actually a community service there for those first six months that the counties provide, and then after that, the state keeps all the archives.
Rod, let me ask, too, because my recollection is that when my children were born, I didn't have to reach out and get the birth certificate. It was kind of part of something the hospital helped navigate. So we're working with hospitals, and then I'm thinking when my father died, the funeral home was involved in helping get a copy of the death certificate. So how does that work?
Definitely, generally, what happens is the hospital or the funeral home will get one copy, and they'll pay, they'll pay us for that copy, and it goes to you, to the family. Many times, not so much with birth certificates, some parents will come in and grab a birth certificate or an extra one, but it's generally death certificates, because they need death certificates for all the life insurances and all your other things. And so that's where they will buy multiple, anywhere from two to, I think we've seen as high as 12 or so copies of that.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is, do the funeral homes actually purchase those death certificates as part of the funeral cost? So they're aware that these costs are going up, and then the hospitals also, if they're involved in the birthing process, are aware?
And they were, the hearings that the state put out had the mortuary, funeral home lobby there and everything else. They're well aware of this, and from what we've heard is that it's, for them, it's a pass-through cost.
The family generally pays a fee for the service, right?
So I also should point out that the order includes an additional increase in January 1 of 2018, and at that time, the state fee schedule is going to increase the cost for additional copies by another $5.
But the certificate replacement fee has gone down, right? No longer a $20 flat fee for four, but $5 per replacement, so there's a bargain. All right, any questions for Rod or Rick?
No.
It's just costing more to be born and to die.
You know, I look at these, I always look at the options we're given, you know, and this is, we can approve Fee Schedule A, Attachment A, or decline, but in parentheses, it should say, but you really can't.
Yeah, we're mandated to approve this.
So it makes it look like we have a choice. So Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we do approve the fee schedule, Attachment A, having to do with vital records.
Or we could bring on a writ.
A writ?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the fee schedule. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you're going to stay around for a few minutes, right? Okay, great. So that concludes our business this morning. It is Wednesday, December 2. We're just concluding our board session. I'll go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. We did have a meeting that's listed on this notice this morning at 7:30, which has already occurred. This was with PGE President and CEO Jim, is it Pyro? Is that how you say his name? At the Salem Chamber of Commerce offices on Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. At noon today, December 2, is the Woodburn Marion County meeting. That will be held at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. This afternoon, at 2:30, is the Governor's Reentry Council meeting, and I believe Commissioner Cameron will be attending that meeting, as he's a member. That is at the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training Hall of Heroes, 4190 Omsville Highway Southeast in Salem. Tomorrow morning, December 3, Thursday, is a Salem Chamber Public Policy meeting at the Salem Chamber offices, 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Then at 9:30 is a Department Head of Elected Officials monthly meeting, followed by the holiday luncheon, and that will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom here at Courthouse Square upstairs on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Thursday, December 3, at 7:00 p.m., is a Town Hall meeting of the Marion County Republican Central Committee to be held at Country Meadows Village, 155 South Evergreen Road in Woodburn. On 12/4, Friday at 7:30 in the morning, is a Workforce Board and Jobs Council meeting that will be held at the Center for Business and Industry, 626 High Street Northeast, Room 203 in Salem. Friday, December 4, at 1 o'clock, is a progress update to the North Saniam Distressed Communities Workshop, and that's at Trexner Farms, is that correct? 20146 Ferry Road Southeast in Stateon. That's from 1 to 2:30. Monday, December 7, we'll start the day at 8:30 in the morning with the Board of Commissioners' Calendar Review. That's in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square, followed by Management Update at 9 a.m., same location. At 11:30 will be the Board of Commissioners' Holiday Luncheon Gift Exchange. That will be in the Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, December 8, at 7:30, is our monthly State and Marion County meeting, held at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North 3rd Avenue in Stateon. That will be followed by a work session, Environmental Services Budget, which will be up in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. Tuesday afternoon at 4 o'clock, December 8, is a Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting. That will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square. And then a week from today, Wednesday, December 9, at 9 a.m., we will be holding our regular Wednesday board session, but this will be one of our meetings that we are holding at another location, and it will be this time at the Oregon Garden Resort Main Lodge Trillium Room, 895 West Main Street in Silverton. So we'll get to see the Christmas in the garden, right? So those are our notice meetings.
Maybe that's just swell.
They talked about that this morning at the PGE meeting, right? They actually, Commissioner Cameron said you would be skating to the group.
And she said that I would be in the dog dummy bite suit.
Okay, it's all good, but we need these fire chiefs back in the MTs. We've got to cover Silverton hard if I'm out on ice.
You should be careful being gone from a meeting, Commissioner, because you never know what your fellow Commissioners say about you.
Yikes.
So anything else? Anything interesting for the, for the order here?
It's been a busy week.
It has. December's not supposed to be this busy. I'm not getting...
I looked at the calendar, and it's just really full.
Yeah, it is.
Busy.
Lots of meetings.
Yeah.
But a very lovely time of year. Lights are coming out, and I'm playing Christmas music on my car stereo and enjoying that.
A little rain, maybe there'll be some duck hunting yet.
Mm-hmm. Good. Did you both meet the, did you meet the new guy last night?
I did.
I met him this morning. I wasn't able to, well, I was able, but I just...
I've gone blank on his last name.
Steve Powers.
Powers.
Right. He was in the, I didn't have a chance to meet him officially, but he was in the meeting.
Seemed like a nice guy I got to visit. I asked him, so how'd he end up in, you know, Salem, Oregon, from Ann Arbor, Michigan? But he apparently had worked in Jackson County as Assistant County Administrator there and liked Oregon, so was anxious to get back, so that's kind of, kind of cool that he noted it and said, "This is someplace I'd like to work," and it sounds like everybody's high, and he's, newspaper article this morning that excited, too, would be the best way to say it. Thinks he can do good things, and I suspect he will.
That's one thing we could mention, is we took a jail tour yesterday and toured the Work Center and Work Release Center, which is now going to be called, I think, the Transition Center, and the Parole and Probation Building. That's annually, we're required to do that by statute, but I thought it was an interesting visit, as we hadn't, I hadn't been in that parole and probation building for a long time, and I don't, I think it's been more than 10 years since I've been in the enforcement part of the Work Center. You know, I go over to the Immuno Center all the time, but I've not been in the, in the backside of it, so good to see.
What people may not know is how they're, with one pot empty, how they're shuffling usage and bringing everything up to date. And that was kind of one of the highlights, is to see that work done, and I forget which one they said, whether it was C or doesn't matter, that like new, and it does look like they've dealt with what's been a problem in the past, replaced it from lighting to even vents that have been dangerous.
Right, for suicides.
Took that away. So, yeah, it was, as always, interesting, and I'm always, I wish the whole public, the entire public, could really see what a great facility, but also a great institution we have there, and so proud of the work they do.
I know the Sheriff's Office does take public tours of the jail from time to time, so if people are interested, they should contact the Board Office.
I'm always worried they may just want to keep me there. I would, I never know. Does this count as, you know, time? I should get some credit for that if I ever...
Really, you should.
Yeah, we've had about 10 hours, and that's probably about as long as I ever want to be there. It's all legitimate.
Well, what I would say is, I remember there's some celebrity in Oregon that served some time there and complained about the food. And yesterday, I actually took a roll that just came out of the oven, and I think I gave you a little sip.
I think that's a classy misdemeanor. I didn't know it was stolen property. I wouldn't have taken it.
The gentleman who was working back there was really proud of his rolls and wanted me to try one right off the rack.
They were good. I lifted them off.
They were good. Of course, I said it, you know, had good butter on it, and Jason said it tastes like butter.
All right, I think that would be a good note to end on.
Actually, between yesterday and today, I got on the scale, and I was two pounds heavier, so I don't...
From that half a weight?
Yes, I don't know what it was.
How's that happen?
All right, well, with that, we will adjourn.
Thank you.